Welcome. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. It's April 2nd, 2015, and you are at the Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. We're glad you're here. Thanks for taking the time and making the effort. Ms. Bondrick, will you do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McKean?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, join me in with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, we're going to begin our exciting evening with a presentation about So You Want to Be a Teacher, Why? And we will bring Mr. Kalen Kendall, President of the Olathe NEA, up to begin that presentation. Thank you, Kalen.
Well, thank you. We are here this evening to recognize National Teacher Day, which will be occurring on May 5th, which will be before the next board meeting, and also that week, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I think that there's no better way to kind of show our appreciation for teachers than to invite one of our own teachers, Mr. Kenneth Gandy, who is our district Kansas Teacher of the Year nominee and also an auto technology teacher at the Olathe Advanced Technology Center. So I will turn it over to Ken to give you a presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. When Kalen asked me to do this, my first thought was, you know, I'm just an auto shop teacher. What do I know? And, you know, what can I bring? And as I thought about it, I realized that what I can bring is the fact that it's not what I teach. It's the act of teaching that makes a difference, and that's what I wanted to bring into it. So if you don't mind, age has taken my hair and my waistline, my eyesight, and possibly my memory. So consequently, I have notes. I want to thank all of you for allowing me to be here, and it's really an honor. And it's difficult for me to talk to people that I respect as much as the people here. The school board has been, this is my seventh year in Olathe, and the school board has been extremely supportive, and the administration has been extremely supportive. So with that said, I thought I'd start off with maybe my story. I was one of those students who was not very motivated, to put it mildly. And, you know, I was just kind of wandering through school. My dad finished the eighth grade, and my mom finished high school, and they were very big on education, and it wasn't something I was really interested in. And so there were two teachers that made a difference in my life. One was a coach and one was a teacher. And so with that said, they kind of encouraged me, and I went to school. I was going to teach for five years to repay my debt to society. That was 35 years ago. I coached, enjoyed teaching, have taught in many places across the state. And so I picked this topic, so you want to be a teacher, and why? And that was the question my parents asked me. So I thought that I would start with that. And maybe a brief history a little bit. Webster's has a definition of teach. And the Webster's definition of teaching is it's to impart knowledge or skill in, to impart knowledge or skill to, or to give instruction. And that really doesn't talk about why you want to be a teacher. So I went back a little bit, and teaching's an ancient skill, and teachers have been known by many names, and I've listed them there: teacher, educated professor, philosopher, rabbi. Those are all names that teachers were known by. But we do know teachers make a difference. And as I show these pictures, it's obvious who they are, so I don't need to introduce them. But teachers have made a difference from ancient times to modern times. Now, I have teachers in my life, and this one right here is one that I live with. And so we get to discuss a lot about teaching and education, and we get to share a passion with each other. And there was a coach in high school that I mentioned earlier. And then I have a coworker that I work with, which allows me to have the opportunity to bounce ideas with, because you're only as good as the people you work with. And to make the real story of why you want to be a teacher, this is Vicente Silva. Vicente was one of our former students, and he came in, and he had been in a gang, had been shot twice, wasn't much interested in school. And he came in, and he fell in love with automotive, and he fell in love with the fact that we cared enough to make his life better. And so he went to Johnson County Community College, and he became their flyer, on the front of the flyer, "Why You Want to Be in Johnson County Community College." And this was the quote that he had on there. Now, in the process of that, Baron BMW saw that article and hired him. He's 21 years old. He's been to Germany twice, three months at a time, training by BMW to work in the field. Now, this is a success story that relates to our program, but there's many other success stories and many other teachers. And as I just pop these up, these are skills competitors that we've had, students in class, a student who isn't part of our program, but I know that a teacher made a difference in his life, and another student that I could tell more stories about, and I could tell you many, many more, and I could tell you many more about other teachers. This is Musgrave, who's retiring this year. Because the reason you want to be an educator is because you care and you make a difference. Thank you very much.
If you have never taken a tour of his area and the entire Advanced Technical Center, I suggest that you do so. I'm ready to re-enroll in high school and be under his tutelage, because, as you could tell, he's very passionate about what he does, but the education profession as well in general. So thank you very, very much. Let's go on to, Mr. Hutchinson has a presentation about bond 2013, our summer construction projects and safety and security updates. You've been busy, haven't you?
A little bit, a little bit. It's my pleasure to provide with you this evening an update on our projects in bond 2013. We are about halfway through. It's been a three-year plan, and so we thought it was a good time to report out and tell you about all the wonderful things that have been happening as part of this initiative. If you remember back to when we first introduced the bond issue, we built the bond issue around four themes: growth, safety, security, technology, and aging facilities. Dr. Dugan and myself are going to walk through each one of these threads and give you a status report of where we're at. But before I get started, this is a symbol we used a lot in the bond campaign, but I can't emphasize it enough any time I have an opportunity to speak, that the choices we make to put funding into our facilities is not a choice over teachers or other staff members. It's just two different sources of money. And sometimes we don't have the operating funds to make inroads in the classroom, but we may have bond funds, which can't be used for the classroom, but it can only be used for bricks and mortar. So we continue to try and make improvements to our facilities, even in lean times. The first thread is growth. And under that growth thread, one of the first things was acquisition of land. Last year, we were able to complete the acquisition of various parcels in order to build Olathe West, and we also completed the purchase of a sixth high school site should it be needed in the future. With land complete, obviously, the biggest piece of this growth thread is Olathe West High School. In 2013-14, we began design, and that design has actually bled over into 14-15. In addition, in 14-15, we've seen site acquisition begin. We've seen temporary hedge lane go in place, and the permanent hedge lane construction has begun. In about three months, you're going to really start to see this building rise up, and by November, it'll be all weathered in, meaning the steel will be up, the tilt-up panels will be in place, the roof, so that work can move indoors for the winter months, where mechanical systems and plumbing systems, electrical systems, glazing can all be put in place, interior walls, and emerge in the spring to where we are ready to begin final finishes on the building. Substantial completion of the building should be around November of 2016, which should provide us enough time to put the thousands of pieces of equipment and furniture in place to open school on August of '17. This summer, it's going to be very exciting, fast-paced construction that you'll see at the site, and finally, West is going to become a visible reality for the citizens of Olathe. Also in this growth thread was funding for a 36 elementary. At the time of planning, it was contemplated that this elementary school would be needed to provide relief to Cedar Creek Elementary. At this point, that's still true. Growth patterns could shift. We're not quite ready to say we need that school yet, so that's more of a future need, but the funding is in place for it. If we look at the second thread, safety and security, part of that thread was to take care of five of our remaining elementary schools that did not have permanent walls or doors on their classrooms. To date, we have four of the five complete. Northview will be completed this summer. Northview was a very large undertaking, and it needed two years to complete it. So we apologize, I believe at the joint meeting, we indicated that all of them were complete. The majority are complete in Northview, but there is a section that still needs to be completed, and it'll be done for the start of school this year. In addition to the classroom with doors, we also had 13 elementaries that were going to receive a new secured main entrance. In addition, we had Harmony, Heartland, and PLC that were going to receive some modifications, not as extreme. We just needed to create more of that vestibule area for them. All of these are complete, with the exception of Harmony, Heartland, and PLC, which will be completed this summer. Also in this thread was what we affectionately called the views, work that was going to be done on Fairview, Northview, and Westview. To date, we've completed the secured entrances, and Northview has a portion of its age facility work completed. We will complete the other portion, other than their 1990 edition, this coming summer, and that '90s edition will be taken care of in Summer Three with Fairview and Westview's remaining work. In addition to the secured main entrances, we identified the need for secured event entrances on our middle schools. All of these middle schools will have their secured event entrance ready for the start of the coming school year. California Trail and Chisholm Trail are a little less involved. They have existing canopies that are getting enclosed. The other four will get an addition that's similar to this rendering. And as you can see, even right next door, construction is already beginning on these projects. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dugan to talk a little more about some of the other safety and security features of the bond issue.
We talked, in addition to some of the bigger construction at the time of the bond, some other security, safety features or enhancements. So let me go through some of those quickly, and again, we will talk about these a little bit last week. District-wide, ongoing, we're consulting with a national expert in the area of security, because we want to be very smart and prioritize how we use these dollars, so that we really are doing that which needs to be done first and second, and in the order that makes sense, with lots of input from our other experts, which are building principals and our patrons. So that process is ongoing for us. At the elementary schools, we're done. Checkmark in terms of all our front door camera systems have been replaced, upgraded. We don't have a better name for this, but buzzer entry systems. Everyone knows what those are. And we also have all of our new interior, exterior cameras in our elementary schools, and they're used regularly. They really have been found to be very helpful in terms of both safety and security. So that has been a great success. For our middle schools, they will be part of the year three, part of this project. We will start in year three with upgrading and actually putting in place front door cameras and buzzer entry systems for them as well. So all our middle schools will have that same show ID, get buzzed in process as year three of the bond, as well as their interior and exterior cameras, and some of those board pieces are coming to approval from you guys to continue with those projects. For our high schools, ongoing, we're going to be upgrading the camera systems there. Remember, our high schools already have working camera systems, but they need some upgrades. We're upgrading the networked video recording, the backend system, so they can be viewed better, stored better, longer. It actually increases the digital quality when you look at the picture by upgrading this backend system. So we're also bringing that proposal to you guys as well through the board approval process. And we're moving some camera systems to smarter locations. As we've added on to our high schools, cameras have ended up in some strange positions, so we use some of the consultants' expertise. Let's move them and be smarter about the video recording we're getting in our high schools. What's still to be determined is this concept of doing a full upgrade of all of our high school cameras. It isn't the advice of the security experts that we are in need of that, but one day we will. Eventually, these will be cameras that are too old and don't have some of the technology capacities we need with a growing network here in this district. So the arrow going forward, at some point, we'll have to talk about additional revenue sources to go in and do a full turnover of the camera systems in our high schools. But for now, they're getting some upgrades, and they'll be very pleased with that quality.
The third thread of the bond issue was technology, and what was contemplated under this thread was to catch up on our replacement cycles and also to upgrade and enhance our digital classrooms, increase what we call our foundation, more access for technology for kids, and do some work on our infrastructure and our network hardware. As it stands now, we are back on track with our replacement cycle. We've caught that up. Digital classrooms, about 50% of them have been updated, and we're continuing this second year to complete the rest of the classrooms. As far as the increased access, you're all very well aware, we've completed a two-to-one initiative at the elementary level, and we are currently in the process of a middle school one-to-one iPad initiative. To recall, though, we had set a specific dollar amount for this piece. We did not have these initiatives in mind. We just knew we needed to increase our access for students. So through leasing at the elementary level, we're able to stretch those dollars into a full implementation to elementary and middle school. As we continue to look at the high school, once a solution comes forward, there really isn't bond dollars for that solution. We'll have to look at alternative sources, or if the timing worked out that there was a future bond issue or something, we'd address it there. Otherwise, we'd probably be looking at capital outlay to try and fund that piece. We continue to just work on our infrastructure and our peripherals as needed, moving forward and updating those systems. The final thread, which is the most voluminous thread, is aging facilities. There's approximately 300 projects across our capital improvement plan that this bond was built around. They're varying scopes from shades to full heating and cooling replacements, so some complex and some very simple. We knew going in we'd have to have a three-year plan. So the first year, we did a lot of work in about 35 of our schools and worked on bringing our athletic complexes forward. Year two, we're going to touch about 25 other buildings, and in year three, we'll wrap around and pick up anything that was not done previously. One of the most recent completions in the improvements was our athletic complexes. The baseball and softball fields are now being played on. They were the last component. We had our football, soccer. Now we have softball, baseball in place, and recently, our tennis complex has been complete, too. So all of the complex work, other than a little bit of cleanup, is completed from the bond issue. In addition, this summer, we're going to be touching 18 different sites with a variety of aging facility projects. They span the gamut from, as I said earlier, window blinds, which seem odd, but as you tear out windows, you have to do something with the blinds, so it's really kind of a package deal, to window replacements, to flooring replacements, to lighting replacements. This is an example of one of those types of replacements. This is a resinous or epoxy flooring on the right replacing the old tile on the left. And besides just being more aesthetically better-looking in many of our schools, it really does help us to save on operating dollars. This is a much more efficient floor to keep clean, and the upkeep on it, less labor, less supply costs long-term than trying to clean up tile and wax it on an annual basis. Similarly, window replacements don't seem really exciting to talk about when you say on the left is an old steel window. We're replacing with more efficient windows on the right, but it really will help, once again, preserve those very precious operating dollars. In addition, all that work across those elementaries in Olathe North, we have projects at our middle schools as well. Seven middle schools received projects. Six of them are getting a third music room, three gymnasiums, and then we have four of them that are getting some of their aging facility work, because it made sense to do that while we were doing additional work at the building. If I've lost you to this point, let me try and summarize just how much construction work is going on in the district. I mean, when I say something about like a door replacement, some of you might sit there and think, oh, that probably takes about five minutes to replace, but actually, doors take several hours to replace. So I'm not really good at math. That's a joke. So I kind of mapped this out and walked through the problem myself. We have 151 single door replacements scheduled, 144 double doors, nearly 500 window replacements, nearly 2,000 light fixtures, 75,000 square foot of ceiling replacement, 77,000 square feet of epoxy flooring, and 280,000 square feet of carpet replacement, predominantly in classrooms where you have to move everything out and move it back in. In addition, we're working on a high school and seven middle schools. So it all adds up to a very large amount of work over a very short period of time, predominantly the summer months is when most of this aging facility work has to occur. So with all that activity, are we done? We're not. As our district continues to grow, we'll have to carefully monitor that growth, and we're going to have to determine when the timing is for the next bond issue. We believe our next immediate need might be that elementary school, which we have funding, but any other addition or new facility is not contemplated in this bond issue, and we don't see the growth going away. So although we don't know the timing today for the next bond issue, we will have another one to address those growth needs. You're going to see a flurry of activity, as I said, this summer, so it really just bears repeating. I have to say it again. This wasn't a choice of not putting money into operations. When you see all this beehive of activity across the district, we're not just choosing to do something to our buildings versus doing something for our teachers and staff. We have this funds through bond dollars and even under the block grant. Although a lot of doors have been opened, bond and interest is a very sacred legal thing that it can only be spent on bricks and mortar. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, just a couple quick ones, since it looks like we've got a little bit of time. On the windows and blinds, it shows on the one chart showed it's exterior. Does that mean it's work involved in the exterior part of the building? Or Greg, is that part of, are we changing the way we do blinds? There was a chart you put, summer of 2015. I just, but...
It's really not exterior. It's really because we're doing the exterior windows and doors. It's kind of an exterior project. We have to replace that as part of that project. Apologize for that confusion.
And then on the epoxy flooring, I see one of the things on future, I think it's future events, that we're doing a trial of some epoxy flooring. Don't we have enough epoxy flooring in there? Why are we doing a trial?
It's not epoxy flooring. It's really a Teraflex floor. It's for a gymnasium. In our elementary gymnasiums, we have some tile. We transitioned to carpet. The pricing has come down on Teraflex. It's much easier to maintain. We believe it's going to be safer for kids. We don't want to say that's the new standard till we trial it. Actually, we have it in the auxiliary gym at Mission Trail, but we want to put it in elementary, study it for the year, and determine is that where we should be heading, because the year three schedule has a lot of carpet replacement in elementary gymnasiums.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Just on the funding piece of this. So obviously, when we put a bond together, we're making our best guess at what it's all going to cost. And I know you don't have it here, and I'm not looking for the answer today, but that would be something I'd be interested in, in looking at and saying, okay, how close are we on a budget with this? Are we, you know, construction costs have been going up, the things that I'm hearing. Materials are going up, labor costs are going up. It's hard to find people, because a lot of construction's going on. So I'd just be kind of curious, based on what we were planning, how far along are we with that, and are we within striking zone of our budget?
I can tell you we're within striking zone. We're very fortunate, although it's probably going to kill Greg and Travis, that the pace of this work, to get it done in three years, is really helping the district, because escalation has really taken off, and they can nod yes or no. I believe really in the last 12 months, they've really seen it go, and having so much of the work done right out of the gates has helped us a lot. If we were waiting five, six years to do some of this work, it would have been difficult to stay in budget.
Is that it? Thank you. Thank you for your wonderful work. It's exhausting just hearing about it. Growing pains. All right, we have a few minutes. Let's move on to our action consent agenda. That would be items 5.01 through 5.09. Would anybody like to talk about any of these?
I'd move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.09 as presented.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Amy Martin. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McKean?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right. Action bids, contracts, and agreements. 6.01 Audit Services for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2015. Any comments, questions? This is pretty routine. I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the auditing services contract with Meis, Hauser &amp; Company P.A. for the period ending June 30th, 2015, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion by Dr. Daniels, second by Mr. McKean. Roll call vote, please. Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McKean?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right. I'm looking down here at, let's just take item by item. 6.02 Domestic Water Main Replacement at Pioneer Trail Middle School. Dr. Brady, this was unanticipated, is that correct? Or, I mean, it wasn't in the scope of initial work, right? Thank you for heading to the mic.
It was not. This was an item that is, we reviewed the final construction documents with the service center staff, like we do on every project. They noted that they'd had issues with this water main for a couple of years, so we added it to the scope of the work for Pioneer Trail, Indian Trail, excuse me.
All right. Thank you for clarifying. Any discussion? Entertained a motion?
Motion to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second. All right, a motion by Mr. McKean, second by Amy Martin. Roll call vote. Mr. McKean?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
That's kind of like wood rot. You've got to deal with it when you're working, or it really grows on you, the problem. So it's no fun, but you've got to do it. 6.03 ACM Removal Bid for Northview Elementary Phase Two.
I move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion by Amy Martin, second by, it was Mr. Poland. Roll call vote, please. Mr. McKean?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, 6.04 Glass and Glazing Bids for Four Middle School Additions.
This is actually to reject the bid.
Okay.
And we're rejecting because, again, just a limited number of, one proposal.
We think we can get better bids at a different time.
Okay. I would move to reject the glass and glazing bids for four middle schools as presented.
Second. All right, I've got a motion to reject by Mr. McKean, second by Amy Martin. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McKean?
Yes.
All right, in our local agreement with City of Olathe...
Might have Brent pop up and give you just a minute on this. I didn't look. Did he pop up, or did he just?
Popped up.
I lapped up. I bound it. This just continues our work with the city, the great relationship that we have with the City of Olathe, but they've written a grant to have some sidewalks approved in neighborhoods around four of our elementary schools, Haven Croft, Northview, Ravenwood, and Ridgeview. And as part of that, our school district gets about $20,000 from that grant that we get to do some educational programming and some things to help give kids incentives, if you will, to walk or bike to school. And so our plan at this point is to partner with another organization, a nonprofit organization in Kansas City called Run-Walk KC, or I'm sorry, Bike-Walk KC. And what they're going to do is they will bring some programming to each of those four schools, primarily working with kids in intermediate-grade levels, maybe something for third grade. We haven't quite worked out all those details yet, but what they'll do is they'll bring about 50 bikes to each of the schools on different days and talk to the kids about bike... days, and talk to the kids about bike safety, and how to ride bikes safely, and crossing streets, and all those things. Kind of the traditional bike rodeo, but much bigger and better, if you will. All students will be able to participate and learn some bike safety and some great habits that way. One of the things that's really exciting for some of the students in the schools as well, that may not have the means at home to purchase a bicycle, is they have a program called Earn a Bike. And so, right now, we're anticipating that will probably be our fifth graders that will participate in that. But it's about an eight-session class, if you will, that they take, where they learn about bike maintenance, and taking care of your bicycle, and being a good bike rider, and encouraging others to be a good bike rider, those kinds of things. And then at the end of that, you actually get your own bicycle. And so, we're excited about that as well. And so, that's kind of the global programming, if you will, that we've met with the four principals on. Chris Graup and I have worked with the four principals. They feel great about that, and that'll take the lion's share of the money that we're getting from this grant. It will leave just about probably $1,000 for each school to do some other things, to help some kiddos, encourage kids to walk and bike to school, things like that as well. They may even use the money to purchase some additional bicycles, so some other kids can participate in the Earn a Bike program and things like that. So, kind of a global perspective right now, but we're certainly excited to be able to do some things to promote this in our schools.
To whom do we owe our thanks at the city for bringing this idea to us?
Is Chris with us tonight? He is, good. Chris, help us with that part.
Thomas Dow with the Public Works Department.
We really owe him a debt of gratitude, because I'm reading the contract, and right here, and no cost incurred by USD 223.
Right.
And so, the benefits are great. So, thank you. That was a great gift in this time.
Principals were thrilled when we said, we'd like to talk to you about this.
Is this a program that could continue each year, or is this just a one-year and done?
It is a program that could continue. I mean, part of it depends upon, the city is providing a match to, it's an 80/20 match that the city is doing for the sidewalk construction. So, part of it depends on when the city has the budget to provide the match as well. But the grant is an ongoing grant, yes.
I understand, thank you.
Great, so thank you, Thomas Dow, for getting this done. So, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the inter-local cost-sharing agreement with the City of Olathe as presented.
Second. All right, I've got a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right, 6.06 Trade Bids for Olathe West High School.
Greg, I mean, this is quite a large payout with this. Can you just kind of walk and talk through everything? Not everything, but just a high level of what it is that is included with this?
This is what's normally referred to as mechanical electrical plumbing. This is all of the fire suppression, which is fire sprinkler bids for the project. It's all of the plumbing for the project. It's installation of the mechanical equipment we purchased last month. It's the installation of that equipment, plus all the duck work and piping that goes with it. It's all the electrical for the building, what we have referred to as the high voltage, not low voltage, like keyless access systems. And it's the fire alarm for the building. This is, it is a rather large number. Tonight, after we approve these, we will have bid about 60% of the money from the estimate. We're slightly under our estimate so far.
Okay.
So, this is a large amount, but we're sort of on track with our estimate at this point.
That's what I was going to ask, is on the bid summary sheet?
Yes.
So, at the bottom of this, it's got a total pending board of education approval of $14 million, and next to it's 15.5. And then just below that, can you talk me through those numbers?
The first row is both the accepted bids and alternates.
Okay.
In the far right column is the construction manager's estimate.
That was their estimate.
For those items.
Okay.
It's sort of the column heading at the top continued on down that column. So, what we have is what's pending tonight, both the bids and alternates, plus, and then in the other column, the construction manager's estimate, what we have previously approved, and the construction manager's estimate for those, and then a total of everything pending and approved following tonight, and whether we're over or under our estimate.
Okay.
And we're slightly under our estimate to this point. And all of these bids, plus the previous bids, represent about 60% of the work. We have another bid package on the street right now that bids in April 9th. That's another 20%. So, next month, we'll have about 80% to talk about, and that'll give us a good feeling for where we are with the budget.
Overall, okay.
What are the, sort of the optional items you're waiting for to see how we come? Some extra buildings or something?
Excuse me.
Weren't there some extra items that you were waiting, we were waiting to see how we did on some bids?
It's bid alternate 13, which is a storage building. And it's just the fact that bid alternate 13 is spread through so many, its footings, its foundations, its walls, its ceilings. So, it's spread through so many bid packages, it'll be the nine April bid package before we have all of the items for that building. And this is a storage building.
A storage building located where?
At the far north end of the site. It's normally the storage building associated with athletic equipment, track equipments, where they store their hurdles and all that kind of thing.
And is it looking encouraging?
Very encouraging.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I think since it's a big enough motion, I recommend that we read the recommended motion rather than the shorter version, just for clarity when we do make a motion. Does anybody have the screen up? Do you see what I'm speaking on?
I can make it.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept trade bids for bid package number four, work packages number 15 fire suppression from Aegeus Fire Protection, number 16 plumbing from Solidino Plumbing, and accept bid alternate number 22 for plumbing work for à la carte food service equipment, number 17 HVAC from Midstates Heating and Cooling, number 18 electrical from Bart's Electric, and accept bid alternate number 17 for LED light fixtures, and bid alternate 18 for electrical work for à la carte food service equipment, and number 19 fire alarm from Capital Electric as presented.
Thanks.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Martin, a second by Brent McCune. Roll call vote, please. Dr. Daniels?
Hopefully.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, 6.07 Structural Masonry CMU Bid from 4 Olathe West High School. Questions, dialogue? I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call vote, please. Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, trade bids for Santa Fe Trail Middle School. I move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Martin, second by Brent McCune. Roll call vote, please. Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
611 iPad peripherals for Middle School Initiative.
Rita, but with this purchase, is that going to get us the covers and everything for all the iPads then?
Yes.
Is everything, so everything is going to be done at this point? We'll have the iPads purchased, we have all the ancillary stuff, everything's ready to roll this out next year?
Yes. The only, the only thing that we have not bid yet, we think we're going to need some additional switches in place for Apple TV. Not sure yet. We're not done with inventory to know exactly how many of those we're going to need. So, you may see yet one more bid concerning some hardware for iPads, but it'll probably be June or July before we're ready to bid that. But this is for the cases for both the students and staff. Power strips in the classroom, so when a student doesn't bring it in charged, they have some place to plug it in and charge it, just some of those additional little pieces. And they do add up, just due to the quantity.
Absolutely. And then, Dr. Barry, are we going to, or can we get some sort of a presentation of how this rollout's going to look and feel, and expectations and things such as that before we actually do it all? Absolutely. Staff's already worked on a detailed plan in terms of how it's to happen, first with staff, so that they have them for the summertime, but we can share that. Perfect, great. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I will move to approve the purchase of power strips, keyboards, and tablet stage to KC AV for $138,415, and to approve purchase of power strips and cases to CDW for $203,987,000 as presented.
Second. All right, a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
6.12 Phase Two Security Camera Project. Questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to award contract to American Digital Security to complete all installations of Phase Two for a price not to exceed $1,132,000 as presented.
Second. All right. I've got a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Shear. Roll call vote, please. Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, 6.04 Glass and Glazing Bids for Four Middle School Additions. I move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mrs. Martin, second by Brent McCune. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
6.12 iPad peripherals for Middle School Initiative.
Rita, but with this purchase, is that going to get us the covers and everything for all the iPads then?
Yes.
Is everything, so everything is going to be done at this point? We'll have the iPads purchased, we have all the ancillary stuff, everything's ready to roll this out next year?
Yes. The only, the only thing that we have not bid yet, we think we're going to need some additional switches in place for Apple TV. Not sure yet. We're not done with inventory to know exactly how many of those we're going to need. So, you may see yet one more bid concerning some hardware for iPads, but it'll probably be June or July before we're ready to bid that. But this is for the cases for both the students and staff. Power strips in the classroom, so when a student doesn't bring it in charged, they have some place to plug it in and charge it, just some of those additional little pieces. And they do add up, just due to the quantity.
Absolutely. And then, Dr. Barry, are we going to, or can we get some sort of a presentation of how this rollout's going to look and feel, and expectations and things such as that before we actually do it all? Absolutely. Staff's already worked on a detailed plan in terms of how it's to happen, first with staff, so that they have them for the summertime, but we can share that. Perfect, great. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
I will move to approve the purchase of power strips, keyboards, and tablet stage to KC AV for $138,415, and to approve purchase of power strips and cases to CDW for $203,987,000 as presented.
Second. All right, a motion by Mr. Shear, second by Dr. Daniels. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
6.12 Phase Two Security Camera Project. Questions? I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to award contract to American Digital Security to complete all installations of Phase Two for a price not to exceed $1,132,000 as presented.
Second.
But now we're asking the board to authorize us to now enter into a true contract negotiation with them to see if we can decrease our costs further. Examples of how you could do that is while we asked for a fifteen percent surplus of buses versus our current ten, maybe we ramped that up slowly. We could look at age of fleet. We asked for a specific average number of years. As you can see, the proposal is very front-loaded. Can we spread that out? So those are the types of things we'd like to talk to them about and see how can we make even further savings.
The opening of Olathe West, how will that impact the negotiations and contract?
It, it will impact it through, they quote, they quote rate, route rates. So as there will be some inefficiency mainly through sports, we'll have to, we'll be adding layer on. Otherwise, some routes may disappear or go to a, a smaller bus as kids, as students shift into West. But it's all spelled out in the contract through that five years. Here's what a route will cost, here's what a double route will cost. So until we know the boundaries, we don't know if that's a balance, it definitely won't be on the activity side. It's, it's layering on.
Okay.
So the, the number of routes in the contract is not set in stone?
No, it, it was, it was based on our current number of routes. They are fully aware of where West is located and when it's coming. And that was one of the reasons we upped that surplus is that it could help us now and we'll definitely need it as we go to bring a fifth high school of sports on. The reason for the surplus is not only, it's not about a bus not starting or something like that, it's also at the end of day, when you're finishing routes and you're also trying to transport to games, you need extra buses to accommodate that, starting to feel that pinch. Whether we need the full five percent that's anticipated for West, we may not need that for two years. We may only need eleven percent to help us out.
I mean, the Finance Committee has met on this a couple, on a couple of occasions and you've given us some details. Just, just for the audience and, and the parents out there, I mean, the bus contract is, is, what is the dollar amount on the entire?
We spend about nine million dollars on transportation a year.
How much?
And that's nine million dollars. Part of that is also with our, with assisted transportation, a piece of that is. And it's spread among during the day transportation and then our athletic shuttles.
Right. And, and because it's such a large dollar amount, that's why we went out to the full RFP because initially we went out and we looked at, we tried to do some negotiating with the current contractor that we had. But felt it necessary to go out and do a full RFP to really to make sure we knew where we were at. And, and it did give us some eye-opening surprises that busing expenses have gone up considerably.
The industry is really experiencing increase in labor costs. First Student had, has already put two dollars per hour additional on their current contract. They were proposing an additional increase and at the time of presenting the RFP, added another increase where the, the industry, not just them, Durham and First Student is losing drivers to the Missouri side. So they recognize that they, in order to maintain the labor force, we're seeing our rates go up. But it was validated through the process that that was appropriate as we saw other bidders coming, coming in with the same type of proposal, just a little bit higher than First Student.
It was a big undertaking. Merle, thank you for all your work on that and John, thank you so much. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain, yes, go, please, yes.
Just a comment to make?
Yes, Mike, please.
As I was walking in, I happened to meet a young lady that's been a bus driver for twenty-three years, I believe. Is that right? Twenty-three years.
Thank you.
And I see her sitting back there and I'm assuming we've got a number of other bus drivers like that, back there. And I would like to ask them to stand up so we can recognize their service to our district. With that, I'd move to authorize the district to begin negotiations with First Student Inc. of a new transportation services agreement and facility usage agreement commence on July one, two thousand fifteen as presented.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Poland, second by Mr. Shear, roll call vote please.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, thank you for your service, guys. Nice to touch Mr. Poland, thank you so much. And we will meet back in here at seven o'clock. Please take a few minutes, the high school art reception and showcase is going on right here. And also in the Instructional Resource Center, I didn't realize that, but don't go there tonight. Thank you. We'll be back at seven. Welcome back. Hope you got a cookie and got to see the art. Now we're going to take a few minutes and recognize some excellence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. I'm thrilled to present our recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognition, recognitions tonight with a community partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development, LB Fote from Life Science Facilitator and David Morford, Principal from Olathe North to come forward to help with these recognitions. Tonight, we recognize Black and Beach. I'd like to ask the following to come forward to be recognized. Jim Lewis, Bill Ernst and Sean Carney. Black and Beach has a tagline of building a world of difference, which is what the local engineering company has done for Olathe students. Black and Beach is being recognized for its donations to support SMART Team, Students Modeling a Research Topic. This allowed twelve students from the Twenty-First Century Life Sciences and Animal Health Programs housed at Olathe North to travel to Boston to present their research at the National Experimental Biology Conference. Black and Beach has also been a valuable partner for the development of the new Twenty-First Century Green Tech Program that will be implemented at Olathe West in two thousand seventeen. They've also supported student internships and generously provided engineering employees to speak at our annual professional skills training for students. We look forward to continued partnership with Black and Beach and we thank you for all of your support. Thank you. Next, we'd like to recognize Jay Novacek, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director from Olathe Northwest. Jay, if you could come forward along with District Athletic Director Tim Brady. The Kansas Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association has named Jay the District Three Athletic Director of the Year. And he was honored at their annual conference in Wichita last month. The mission of the KI AAA is to develop, enhance and preserve the educational values of interscholastic athletics, which Jay does on a daily basis. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Jay, I don't think so. Jay, I just saw that your wife is here tonight. I'd like her to stand and be recognized as well. And our final recognition tonight is of our Biz Fest winners. Would you all come forward along with Deputy Superintendent Allison Banikowski, Director of Instructional Support Programs Jan Heinand and District Staff Erica Razzo and Caitlin Gerard? Students in the Olathe School District placed first and second in KC Biz Fest, a program sponsored by the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Greater KC Hispanic Collaborative. There were twenty-seven students in the district who applied and were accepted to take part in the program. Sergio Madrid from Olathe South took first place. Sergio, if you could wave. There he is.
Wave your hand.
Wave it, Sergio. Sorry. Sergio placed first and received a three thousand dollar scholarship. Reed Shimmel from Olathe East, there you go, took second place and received a two thousand dollar scholarship. In addition, Jennifer Ortiz from Olathe North, who could not be here tonight, won the Most Passionate Student Award. Zaditu Casa from Olathe North won the Most Courageous Student Award. And Umberto Lopez from Olathe North won the Most Perseverance Student Award. Congratulations to each of you.
Do they have families?
And are your families here tonight? If so, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, at each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotaped recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. And I do believe we have one comments this evening, Mr. Don Hunt?
My name is Don Hunt. My address is two six zero three nine West one hundred and forty-third Place, Olathe, Kansas. I've been a resident of Olathe since nineteen eighty. A little more background on me before I get started. I've been in the masonry industry for thirty-seven years, twenty-five of which was in the field and the last twelve as a training director for the Bricklayers Apprenticeship and Training Fund. My, my job is to train young masons through their apprenticeship and then as further as journeyman. So I have a, a pretty good knowledge of all the mason contractors in the city, in metro area. And so I want to comment on, on the Olathe West Structural Masonry Bid. First of all, I'd like to start out by saying our kids are the greatest assets. So first of all, I want to thank you for the dedicated efforts in making the great school district what it is today. I also want to thank you for your, for continuing to build our schools with masonry. Masonry is the most durable, safest, cost-effective materials available and has the lowest lifecycle cost, so it's a good choice. I also want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you in this open forum. I want to talk to you a little bit about a very small piece in what is a much bigger picture as it pertains to the Olathe West High School Project. In the past weeks, the bid process for our new Olathe West High School has been ongoing. One scope of work in particular is the structural masonry scope, which is responsible for the integrity of the building and supports the roof over our kids' heads, if you're not familiar with structural masonry. This package was bid and I've been told that after some deliberation, it was awarded to, I want to refer to it as the contractor going forward, who is based here in Olathe. The point I want to make is concerning this contractor is the, and the information I'm going to share with you will only consist of facts that I can prove and that I think are very important and might possibly have been missed during the decision-making process. It is no wonder that they were low bid. The contractor, although based in Olathe, uses mostly illegal aliens for their workforce, giving them an illegal advantage over law-abiding contractors. In some instances, knowing an illegal worker has no voice, they underpay wages promised when hiring them and firing those who complain about it. More to the point is the track record of attempted workmanship and ability to complete satisfactorily many projects. I will share with you a few examples that are currently ongoing within just a few miles from here. First, Sampson is a general contractor for the Shield Sporting Goods Store currently under construction at one hundred and thirty-fifth and Lamar in Overland Park. The contractor has been thrown off this project in the last couple of weeks due to defective and non-conforming workmanship. A well-known and respected masonry firm in Kansas City has been hired not only to finish the work but also tear everything out that was installed unsatisfactorily and/or unsafe. Going out and doing the project, some of the things you might consider unsafe were large stones at the roof level, thirty feet above the entryway, that were, were set with no mechanical, mechanical anchoring systems. The only thing holding them in place were, were, was the caulking. So some very, and, and there's a host of issues. I've actually got over sixty pictures here that illustrate, these are marked up drawings from the architect and the general contractor showing all the deficiencies and they are very numerous. So the second is Straub Construction is building the Shawinow Elementary School located at Seventy-Fifth and Flint and Shawnee for the Shawnee Mission School District. The contractor was chosen as their low bid masonry contractor. The contractor just filled, just finished rebuilding multiple structural masonry walls due to defective and non-conforming work. Some of which, the roof trusses had to be removed so they could tear down the walls and rebuild them. On the same project, a young inexperienced laborer ran the forklift into another structural wall where a steel lenel was nearly knocked off its seat and luckily avoided the wall collapse that could have resulted in injury or death of nearby workers. It was a pretty major incident. That wall also had to be rebuilt. None of this is new information. If you're in the industry, right here in Olathe School District, a few years ago, you may remember, Universal Construction was a general contractor, this contractor was a sub.
Mr. Hunt, I hate to interrupt you. We've reached the five-minute mark.
I'm sorry.
Why don't we do this? I, I believe that your concerns are, are so large that it'd take far more than the five-minute window. We appreciate you giving us the information. We take it seriously. And if you would leave your evidence with us, we certainly want to know if we've been unaware of a substandard contractor and promise to pursue looking into it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right, any other public comments tonight? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to item seven point oh one. Approval of facility rental fees for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen and proposed complex rental fees. Dr. Berry, is there anything major about this?
There's really not. For the first time, we have worked through now our artificial fields and we'll be using those to be offered to our community for a little bit more rental because we have those fees in place. But otherwise, it's pretty straightforward what we've done in the past.
Questions?
Dr. Berry, one of the things I had, I, I took a little bit of time to look at some of the usage of, of the, the current facilities that we have today. And, and do you have, I mean, and I'm not trying to put you on the, on the spot here because I don't know if you've had time to really look at this and analyze this. But I was kind of surprised by some of the, some schools are used a lot more than others. And I, off to the side, you saw that there was, because there's, the Y Care does some, there's some certain schools that, that wanted the local, you know, swim clubs or something. So you could see that, you can understand that. But I did find it interesting and, and I'm sure we've got logical reasons. Number one, the high school gymnasiums have very little outside usage. But then I was also looking at just some of the other elementaries and some of the other middle schools and just saw a, a variety of, of some heavily used and some just lightly used. Any comments on that?
Yeah, Denise Carpenter is actually here tonight and I know we spend time analyzing that. She could probably make a few comments.
Wonderful.
The numbers you're looking at were impacted by construction at some of the buildings. And then at the high schools, we don't rent those gyms as a rule. They are, they're used for maybe some big events, but not as, as normal, just somebody wanting to rent a high school gym to play basketball. We don't do that. That's simply because they're used so much by the buildings themselves. But there are, and we have puzzled over that ourselves at times. We give people the buildings they request. And quite frankly, some of those that you see just are not requested to be used. So that and the fact that a lot of the buildings were impacted by construction.
So one, so my son plays basketball, so we're one of the, I guess, public people that use this off-hours and things such as that. Is this information, I mean, for the ones that aren't heavily used, because we personally ran into times saying, we live right here by, close to California Trail, we want this and it's used up. But I don't, how, how do we put the information out to the public to say, well, this one's full, but, you know, if you're willing to travel, you can go to this one? Where does the public get the information of what's available, what's not available? How do they get there so that they can start managing from that standpoint?
Right. When we receive a request and the building that they've requested is full, then we call them and we say, that one is not available, what we have, this building or this building or this building. Some of them just don't want to drive, you know, that's just personal preference. Some of the times might be too late that it's available. It's hard telling, but they do, they are informed by us with a phone call. If, if we can't give them what they asked for, they're going to get a phone call saying, here's what you could do though.
Great. And with the additions of some additional gymnasiums?
Yes.
It seems as though that, again, the middle schools seem like they're the highly used.
Absolutely.
That, that'll give a, a few more of the patrons more options in the future to be able to.
We're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Does every group have to reapply every year?
Yes.
So they don't get a standing, gosh, I want Frontier Trails Gym on Monday nights and I just at the end of the year say, I'm keeping it?
No.
Okay, so they all have to?
They all have to reapply.
Okay.
And Denise does a great job juggling. It's a lot.
Oh, it is.
A lot of moving dynamics, especially, especially getting really late for the younger kids. We ran into that and we do a great job making it work. It's like a puzzle, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve facility rental fees for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen and proposed complex rental fees as presented.
Second?
All right. Was that Mr. Shear? I'll take that. Okay, Dr. Daniels, a motion by Dr. Daniels, second by Mr. Shear, roll call vote please, Joy?
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Great. Next on the agenda are future action items and eight point oh one, Kansas Association of School Boards Nominating and Legislative Committee Appointments. Amy, I had asked you to tell us a little bit about this, what this is.
Well, the Olathe District Schools is a member of Kansas Association of School Boards along with, I believe, two hundred and eighty-three or two hundred and eighty-two of the two hundred and eighty-five school districts in Kansas, plus a bunch of technical schools and community colleges. And we're the professional organization that represents school board members, basically, and they do a lot of things. One of the things that we do is, is we hold one position on the board, their Board of Directors, one of fifteen positions. The five largest districts each have their own position on the board. The other ten consist of regions that could be anywhere from, you know, fifty, sixty different school districts. That presents us with actually a lot of power at KASB, but it also kind of, it puts a lot on us because there are seven of us. And we have positions that we need to keep filled. Two of those positions are the ones we're talking about tonight. It's on the negotiating, the nominating committee, who nominates the president and the legislative committee, which works together with the other regions to come up every year with the legislative platform that KASB uses in their advocacy efforts. These are both really important positions because it's a great opportunity to learn more about the organization itself and to learn more about the differing needs of, of other school districts across the state and, and how we come together as an organization to represent all kids in Kansas, which can be a challenge at times. I believe the legislative committee has asked for a two, or a three-year commitment from their members. And I don't know, Mr. Shear, are you done?
It was a two-year?
It's a two-year commitment and, and you're finishing that up?
That's correct.
I, it's, it's really a great opportunity to support all kids across Kansas, but also to be a voice for our district when the different competing needs come up in conversation. The nominating committee is probably a little less work. They get together a couple of times and their charge is to interview and, and not, not select a president, but to make sure that the president kind of passes muster with the organization and then, and then forwards those nominees onto a delegate assembly which actually elects the president. It's, because we have one position on, on the board that has to be filled, this is a great opportunity for someone who's considering becoming a board member in the future because it's a great chance to meet the, the players at KASB and to meet some of, some of our colleagues from across the state.
I know they work tirelessly. I see them all the time in Topeka when I'm there.
Well, I tell you what, Mark Tallman and Tom Krebs do an outstanding job of keeping us up to date through weekly webinars and through their Twitter feeds and different communications that they give us as far as what's going on in Topeka during the legislative session. John Heim, the executive director, does a great blog piece that, that I always share with my friends on Facebook and things like that because he does a good job of kind of taking the technical stuff out of it and just putting it out there in, in plain language. Great organization. I'm, I, I didn't know a whole lot about it when I got started a few years ago. I didn't know a whole lot about it when I got started a few years ago, but I'm very convinced that they offer a really valuable service to us and to the state.
And you have a new role with them, right?
And yes, and that's another thing. I'm supposed to serve a three-year term on the Board of Directors, but I was recently elected as president-elect-designee, and when I take that position on July 1st, we will have to replace amongst, from amongst one of us, my position on the board.
Okay. And it's one of 15?
One of 15.
Okay, so...
So we will go ahead and do that at our May meeting. This will actually be three positions. It'll be the nominating legislative, and then we'll name a person to be at Region 15.
Okay. Great. Something to look into, and thank you, Rick. Was it a good experience serving?
It absolutely is. And Amy kind of talked a little bit about, KASB does a lot more than just the legislative piece of this, too. They offer a lot of workshops, opportunity to teach board members, boardmanship and things such as that. So there's a lot of opportunities to learn from them. The legislative committee, as Amy mentioned, I've been on the last two years, really is eye-opening because, you know, we look at, you know, what's important to us here in the Olathe School District and the Johnson County area, but it also gives you a lot of exposure to the entire state of Kansas, which really is eye-opening because you look at what's happening in western Kansas and what some of their priorities are, are a lot different than what we're looking at here in Johnson County. What this does give us an opportunity to do is to meet, and we did meet three or four times, I can't remember what it was, went to Topeka several different times, but it did give us a chance to collaborate and really sit down with KASB as that voice for the entire state of Kansas. And there really is some negotiating going on. I've sat across from some people, right across, that are out in western Kansas, and we talked about different things that are happening in the legislation right now, happening right now as we speak, and how we want KASB to be able to be our voice for that. And there had to be some negotiating in that because views are a lot different of how things happen. Things are a little bit different even within the Johnson County area between Blue Valley, Shawnee, and Olathe. But it does give us a chance to all talk about this and try to have one area and one voice to say, "Okay, Topeka, these are the things that are very important to us." And to Amy's point, the individuals that go over to Topeka every single day, they do a wonderful job. They do a great job of keeping us up to date of what's going on because, you know, we all have full-time jobs. All of us up here have full-time jobs. We can't always have our ear to exactly what's going on there. And KASB has been a great resource for us to be able to see what actions is being taken, what kind of bills are coming up, what are we looking for, and then also be in that voice for us. So we do appreciate everything that they do for us.
Since there's three positions to fill, does it have to be next month? We have, I'm just wondering about knowing if we've got potential, well, we do have new board members coming on board. Should we...
I'm not certain when the legislative committee meets for the first time, but it's probably...
It seems like they ask us pretty quick for those names, so that's why we have typically done it this time of year.
Well, they ask for the names, but I don't, you know, and that's something I can look into. Maybe I can do that, Lyetta, and get back to you, because we may have new board members who are interested in participating.
Those meetings always, I mean, when Harlan and I have done it, it's been later in the summer, like...
I thought July, I thought it was done...
Yeah, July, later in July, and then August.
Maybe the nominating committee is August, and I think the legislative committee might even be August or September.
The only thing I would advocate as far as doing it next month is not discounting any new board members that are coming up, but having been on the nominating committee and then been on the legislative committee, there's a lot to learn here, let alone getting yourself and stepping out and saying, "Okay, what am I going to be able to do and stretch out into Topeka side of that"? So again, I would, while I'm not downplaying anybody that may be moving on to the board, it might be overwhelming to try to understand what we do here and then also step into that also.
That's a very good point.
You know, if it comes to the point that we don't have people that are interested in stepping up with the group that we have today, then we can take it over from that standpoint. But just coming through that, I think, especially legislative, that would have been overwhelming for me to sit on the board right off the bat and then also be involved with that. I think I've been overwhelmed.
Well, I have to agree with that. I'm not sure that a brand-new board member could really represent us very well, because those conversations can get pretty, well, they get tense, but they also get very detailed.
Okay. Good, good info. Mike, do you want to say, I thought you were getting my attention. All right. So, thank you, Amy. Thank you. How about anything else on the future action item list? We've come to the information written part of the evening. 9.01 is the February Head Start Director's Report. Always exciting to see what's going on over there with Kim Seal. And 9.02, the Spring 2015 Parent-Teacher Conferences. And Dr. Banakowski, do you mind if I put you on the spot? And I just read that one detailed report right before. I apologize. Usually I'm way ahead. But could you tell a little bit about the pilot that happened this last time and kind of what the goal was with that?
Yes, we have had a pilot, as you read, and we had information to you previously as well, with five of our secondary schools, looking at, is there a different format that we should have for our February conferences? And so we had a combination at those schools of five hours of individual conferences, 10, 15, 20 minutes, varied a little bit, where we had an opportunity to invite parents in and students in to have a conference. And that conference could be with a team of people, for example, at the middle school level, as well as we have some team conferences even at the secondary level in some of our specialty programs. An opportunity to get feedback, to see if this was a format that we could use for some parents, it wouldn't obviously be for every parent. And then the rest of the time was spent with the arena conferences. We, our initial information has been positive, but we have collected data from the parents who attended an appointment conference. We've had some data from parents who didn't attend an appointment conference. We have information from staff members, so we're still analyzing that. The committee meets again in either next week or the week after, and an opportunity to take a look at that and see if that's an enhancement to our parent-teacher conference at the secondary level. You know, we've had, since we initiated, parent-teacher conferences, and I believe that was in about 1992, and we've had arena conferences that whole time. And so we're just looking to see if there's some slight modifications, the same amount of time, just some portion of that was with the individual appointment conferences. So we'll be anxious to give you more information as we study our data.
Thank you. It was hard to decipher, you know, what the results were, so we'll look forward to that.
And to look at the percentages and the differences, because really, you know, we're comparing apples to oranges because the conference was different, and expectation to see if that's an opportunity for us to meet with parents we didn't meet with in October, partially some of those parents weren't with us in October. So an opportunity to make that connection, students whose scores may have increased greatly over that time period, and those students who have dipped. And so an opportunity sometimes for that face-to-face conference makes a big difference.
Good.
We'll see what the data tells us.
Thank you. It was encouraging to see that we're always adapting to meet the need because it's so important to have that face time with the parents. So thank you. That was a lot of work.
I think that also we have to remember that there's a lot of other ways that we are connecting with parents, and technology has broadened that opportunity. So parent-teacher conferences in the spring have taken a little different look than they have previously. Our parents are so connected anymore. Students have a lot of data that their parents are reviewing, for good or bad, depending on your perspective, probably.
Thank you very much. All right. Board members, we've come to the topics for discussion time. Anybody have any to discuss?
I just mentioned real briefly that two weeks ago, I went to the NSBA, the National School Board Association Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, with a delegation from KASB. We heard a lot of interesting workshops, a few things that kind of I thought were maybe frightening and also exciting about technology and how we go forward in the future. It's really interesting to see that even though our districts across the nation are so different, that school board members really are kind of the same, you know, no matter where you go. It was a great experience, and then I welcome, any questions you guys have, just reach me after the meeting, and I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Dr. Berry?
I'm going to start tonight. I was asked to do a little myth busting, and we can share copies if anybody would want this later, but I'm passing it to board members. This was something that was presented to us locally, in terms of the question being, is this how we're teaching math in our district now because of Common Core? Traditional problem at the top, 32 minus 12, with the answer being 20. And then it indicates, this is a new way that we, the question was, are we teaching kids to do this math this way in Olathe? And you might be able to be creative and come up with some reasons why somebody did it this way to end up with the same answer, but this is absolutely not the way we're teaching math in Olathe. This is something that you'll find on the Internet that is usually found in opposition to Common Core, but we absolutely have very detailed instruction for our mathematics and strategies in terms of how we're teaching kids, and it really hasn't altered. But it's always good when people bring us forward to say, "Is this happening in the Olathe schools?" And in this case, we can report, "No, it's not." So I wanted to start by sharing that. We had a really exciting assembly at Olathe Northwest last Friday. Sue Rippey, a teacher at Olathe Northwest in the Science Department, was given a surprise assembly. She's being inducted into the National Teachers Hall of Fame. Her picture appears behind me on the wall here. She was already a Kansas Teacher of the Year, but she was a little bit part of the process at some point, and so she kind of knew that it was out there, but the whole assembly was to be a surprise. And I'm telling you, the kids at Olathe Northwest were just terrific with the response that they gave this teacher, very heartfelt. But a surprise to her, and then big things coming. She gets a trip to Washington, D.C. to be, as part of the induction, and so that'll be exciting for her. She's been a teacher for 32 years, actually started our A&amp;E program, or helped start it, Olathe Northwest, and now she teaches college biology. But a nice story. We also had great success with our first robotics team. Exciting, and if you talk to the coach, I think he gets so excited talking about it was a come-from-behind victory for the robots, but they took actually the top two awards again. Not only the robot performed after being a little sluggish in the early rounds, performed extremely well and took the top spot, but you're also judged on the chairman's award, which is the very top spot in terms of the pit that you have and the business plan and the officers that you have and the presentations, it's all rolled into one, and they won the chairman's award again. I think it's the fifth time. But they'll be creating, or competing now in the world championships later this month. The world championships are in St. Louis, so they don't have to go to...
They weren't shooting for Paris.
The other thing I want to report on quickly, a couple more things. One is with the rain that came through in the night, we all enjoyed hearing that, but for the first time in our district, we didn't have to have concerns about whether we play our softball and baseball games today. The intent for our artificial turf on baseball and softball and soccer was really because of our fifth high school that's coming. Early on, the committee that we put together in our community said it doesn't make sense to build a fifth, I mean, a third complex if we can just put artificial turf and we can play on them all the time. But anyway, we played ball games tonight is the word, and we didn't have to throw extra dirt on or rake all afternoon or whatever it might be, and it's a much safer playing field then for our kids as well. So again, that's kind of fun that we could realize that tonight. I meant to be able to give you the latest from Topeka legislative update. The webinar was supposed to be today from KASB. You've talked about what a great service they do for us. They had transmission problems again, and we didn't get anything out of it, but we are in the second break now, and legislature will return April 29th to finish up the veto session. Another exciting story, we've been notified that we've been, received the award for being one of the best communities for music education in the country. Only one school district in Kansas was named, and that's the Olathe School District. So again, kudos to Martha Gabel and all of our music teachers in this district because they do wonderful things with our kids. Mary Matthew updated me that we are halfway through our testing period with doing the state test. Over 13,000 tests that we've already administered, including a new one this year, the multi-disciplinary performance task, where kids have to read something and then write. And they said that really kids are enjoying this piece of it to be able to demonstrate what they know, but then those tests have to be graded throughout the state. So again, some work that comes with that. We will take our turn April 17th in grading some of those as well. And the last thing, as a reminder, that the elections officially come up and end next Tuesday, April 7th. In the audience tonight, I saw Robin Essex, if she would wave. Joe Beveridge, if he's still here, if he would wave. Also want to recognize Nancy Ingram, candidate for the Board of Trustees, and she would wave.
Shannon.
Shannon Wickliffe is here tonight. And one last person that is taking a new role in the election, really come and gone, leadership in our district, is the new president of Olathe NEA, Kathy Meyer. Some of you may not know Kathy, and she would wave her hand as well. Did I miss anybody else that's running for office?
[laughter]
Again, get out and vote. We need to do that in our community. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Okay, do we need an executive session?
We do.
Felter?
Yes.
Just real quick, I saw Greg walk back in after Mr. Hunt's. I think with some of the issues he brought to us, I think we ought to get some information back.
We certainly will bring information back to you and a report that you can have, absolutely.
Had moved that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, discussing matters relating to employer, employee negotiations, to discuss matters relating to security measures that protect communication services and equipment, and consultation with an attorney, and the board return to the regular meeting at, how long?
8:15.
At 8:15 in this room. Executive sessions required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position, to protect the privacy rights of a corporation, partnership, trust, et cetera, with regard to their financial affairs, and to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest.
That's a mouthful. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Poland, second?
Second.
By Mr. McKean? Okay. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?[1773.65]